This is the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting for Monday, March 1st, 2021. We are meeting by Zoom conference line and we are starting at 5:30 and we're on a Monday because our informational part of the town meeting will occur at 7 o'clock and then all day town meeting voting is tomorrow. So don't forget to vote, folks, if I forget to remind you. So let me start first by asking for a moment of silence. This past week, we have lost another former Select Board member, John Sosinski, was served on this board. He's served on the Board of Civil Authority for many years and in many other ways, including as a Rotarian and in other town capacities, has had generously given of his time to this town. Please, if you would join me for a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. And to Janet Sosinski and John and Janet's children, our thoughts and best wishes and our thanks for John's many years of service go out to you. All right, we have we have four Select Board members this evening. Just a reminder that Sharon Russell is still recuperating. We wish her all the best. I spoke to her a couple of days ago and all went well. So we have Joe Donardo, John Paul Fagnant, Erin Jones and Mary Ashcroft. And let's get started. The orders are here in the Select Board Office. I'll sign those and if folks could come over and take a look through the orders and sign them in the next, well, not tomorrow because tomorrow's town meeting, but do come over and sign them, take a look through and we'll take care of that. Next item is the approval of the Select Board minutes for February 16th.
Move to approve.
Motion's made by JP to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Erin?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any additions, deletions, corrections to the minutes? If not, all in favor of the minutes as printed, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You've accepted the minute.
Mary, I'll abstain because I missed that meeting.
Okay, thanks, Joe. All right, do we have any questions from the floor or any public comments?
Mary, Howard Burgess here.
Howard.
Hi. Just a quickie here. The listeners have a certificate that needs to be signed as for the no appeal or suit pending. We do it every year in February and this locks up the grand list so that nobody can take us to court for anything else. And that's certificate is something that I'm not sure we need to do with it once you approve it, but I'll go either leave it with Bill or with Carrie to get it to you.
Do you, well, you, you need it before April 1st. Do you need it tonight?
No, we don't need it tonight. No, just along with the rest of your business, just assign it at some point. That's all.
Okay. Get it to Bill and he'll put it in our packet for next meeting and we'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Howard. Anyone else? Comments or questions from the floor? Okay, if not, we'll move along. Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant to the Select Board, what do you have for us tonight?
Good evening. I kept your packets fairly light for this meeting. And so we have the current meeting schedule and committee agenda items and then one item from Byron. So that's all I have for the, for the packet, so not much on my end. I have been working on the ordinances. And that as of course, of course, is taking a lot more time than anticipated. I'm working to combine all of the amendments. I actually just found 17 amendments which are not included in various ordinances that I'm now trying to integrate and update. So when I have those done, we can get the committees together to start reviewing them because there are some that definitely are going to be updated and reviewed. So other than that, I don't have anything to bring up.
Okay, thanks for tackling that ordinance challenge. We do have ordinances out there. We need to take a look at them and have our departments do that. And it's not very exciting work, but we do need to make sure that our ordinances are up to date as much as they can possibly be. Any questions from Select Board members to Bill? All right, if not, Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
Good evening. Hi, just wanted to remind everyone, as you did this, when you started, the town meeting is tonight via Zoom at 7:00 and then we reconvene for voting tomorrow at our regular polling places, starting at 7:00 a.m. and we go to 7:00 p.m. I wanted to verify with the board how the counting will occur tomorrow here at Town Hall after 7:00 p.m. I've had a conversation with our health officer and we are both in agreement as far as still continue with how our building is three people, a limit of three people in a room as far as my office. I'm wondering how it'll look in the Select Board room when they count ballots, given that there are two, three groups of two counters. But what we're ultimately asking is if you are wondering what the results are and you are not a counter, if you could please join us for a live stream of the counting via Zoom instead of coming into Town Hall. So that's what I wanted to mention and it's up for discussion as far as the Select Board room.
How many people?
Just one point of clarification. They're not, it's not their choice. They won't be allowed to come into Town Hall because there will be too many people per square foot. That's why we have the Zoom for anybody that wants to attend the counting.
Okay. JP, how many people can we put as counters in the Select Board room?
I don't like the idea that it's going to be six. I think, I think that square footage breaks down to like four and one quarter people.
So we could put a table out in the hallway.
That would work. That's a great suggestion.
All right, so that'll give us two groups in here. We'll leave the door open, one group out in the hallway.
My only question for that is how will that look when we're trying to stream it? Is that a Bill question? Is that a?
Yeah, we can do, we can, we can use a couple of the laptops and set them up as individual users and just like you're watching a live, you can watch the video right now on Zoom. We can set it up so there's two camera views and people can watch it. They can switch back and forth or watch one, watch both. So yeah, we can, we can make it happen.
Okay, and I am assuming from my talk with Bill that the link for the Zoom will be exactly the same as this one that we use for the Select Board.
Yes, well, we, yeah, we'll keep it right, just the same as it is tonight to make it easier.
Okay.
That's really all I have, but I wanted the public to know that. That is obviously new information for them. So if anyone can kindly tell people who are asking that that is our plan for tomorrow night in counting.
Okay, thank you. And just a reminder that we're not actually counting every ballot. We're only looking for the write-ins. So the, the machines tally the ballots for the most part.
Correct.
Right, okay. Anything else, Carrie?
No, that was really what we've been focusing on in here right now.
Okay, thank you. And thanks JP and Bill. Any Select Board questions for Carrie? All right, if not, Barbara Noyes-Pulling, Town Planning Commission Chair.
Good evening.
Yeah.
Yeah, about a week and a half ago, the Planning Commission met and we had a couple representatives from the development company that wants to do the housing project off Middle Road, that 260 unit project. A very interesting presentation, the Select Board might want to see it as well. They are, they will have, they're planning on five buildings there, four stories for all five. And a lot of energy efficiency going on there. There's a solar powered trash compactor, LED lighting, night sky compliance, other carbon footprint reductions to be mentioned, I guess, would be determined, and also chargers for electric cars. One really interesting point that they brought up is that most of their units, their developments, they sponsor regular community events, local entertainment, and they have catering. So they have a history of doing that for the community as well as the residents there. So
Where are they gonna, are they gonna be, where are they gonna be locating the school that will serve that population?
Yeah, they, if they go by their past developments, their past apartment centers, because they're mostly one and two bedroom units, they don't get a lot of families that come in and get a lease there. Most of their, their target audience is either young professionals or they say empty nesters who may, who choose to live part-time in these apartments and go someplace warmer in the winter.
They're not going to be able to restrict people with children from this development.
That's correct.
And even if only half the units had one child, that's 120 children.
Yeah, so they, they say they're going to be getting their Act 250 application together shortly. So that certainly is one of the things that we'll be covering with them on that.
Is the, is the school district on notice about this?
When this, I, I heard about the project first because I'm technically in a budding neighbor. So as soon as I got some answers, I sent those to Bill and I asked him to share them with Lynette Galoppo.
Good.
Now, in the, in the process, I have invited the developers to come and make the same presentation to the Select Board sometime later this month. So, and of course, we haven't seen the Act 250 application. Once we do, ability to serve in particular the impact on local schools is one of the criteria. So entirely appropriate questions and, and it's quite a process and we're going to have a chance to ask the developer both when they meet with the Select Board and then as part of the 250 process. So it's a long road and there's a lot of questions.
Yeah.
Mary?
Yeah, Joe?
Well, I also want to point out here that Fire Chief Chris Clark needs to be right on top of this. If folks that were on the board back when Hampton Inn wanted to construct their building, and that's a three-story building, which technically makes it difficult for firefighting. So Chris needs to be really involved, four-story building in Rutland Town and Rutland Town does not have a ladder truck. So there are going to be some issues with that that really need to be addressed and, and hopefully Chris will be right on top of this and his officers because that does present a life safety issue with that building.
Yep. And part of, when I got some preliminary information, I also asked Bill to send, and I think I sent it to the department heads for that very reason. It was an early heads-up so they can all start thinking about the impact this project would have on all of our departments in town. Good. And this is all part of the, you know, the discussion. We need to keep this going. Barbara?
Yeah, yeah. And it may be sooner rather than later that, you know, we need to respond to some of this, some of these ideas they're coming forth with. Other than that, the Planning Commission is working on a list of standardized questions for more run-of-the-mill developers so that we're asking them, you know, pretty much the same questions. We're not going out of bounds in asking too much, things that are beyond our purview. And this list of questions will include some resources for them. Because we invariably turn people to other places, the state or somewhere else for the answers to the questions.
Any questions of Barbara? When is the developer of the housing project expecting to file the Act 250 permit application?
We asked that question, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, the answer was soon?
Yeah, he said that, if I remember correctly, that he wants, he did want to meet with some of the department heads even before filing it. So that way their application could include some of that information already. But they, they are very willing to meet with each of the departments, you know, to make sure that they can address some concerns upfront. But, but he certainly knows that we have the statutory party as part of the Act 250 process.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think the answer was any more precise than that.
When he did the neighbors' meeting, he said the application would be filed in a couple of months. So that would put it probably mid-April?
Yeah, and he knew, he said he expected it to take between six and 10 months for it to go through. So, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you, Barbara. Appreciate your help. Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Hello, all.
Hi.
I don't have much this evening. Basketball has been a very big success. We played a couple of games. The live stream that we've had, gotten a lot of positive feedback from. We'll be looking obviously for guidance for the governor, but we're starting to plan our spring activities. Other than that, I don't have a lot. We're kind of in that transition and hopefully spring will come really, really soon so we can start opening the park and getting things going. That's pretty much all I have.
Okay, any questions from the Select Board of Mike? No? Okay, thank you, Mike. Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Only one thing tonight. I'm sure everybody's heard already, the hospital has moved their operation of Corona vaccines down to the Holiday Inn. So whoever's getting a shot from now on will be at the Holiday Inn. So that place will be probably pretty crowded. So the hospital has asked from the hours of 6:30 a.m. to, I believe, 7:30 p.m., that Rutland City will be going down there with us if we have any calls. Just try to get all the people out. They're, they're thinking up to 600 people a day are going to be going through there.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Any questions from the Select Board of the Chief? I will say, I went online, today was the day, the first day when people over 65 could sign up. And I went on at just about 8:00 and by 8:15, I had my appointment and it's for Wednesday. So there are time slots available and the process was pretty easy to do. So I would encourage folks to sign up and get your, get your first shot. All right, Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief.
Hey, everybody.
Hey, Ed.
We had approximately 34 calls for service. I'm still working on my knowledge of our new system. I will get it out to you when I can. We have a couple of things we want to talk about as far as the officer position. We still only have one person who applied for a position. And then Ted has a bunch of stuff on as far as a cruiser. We're looking to get to sell the SRO car and, and take the equipment out of there and use it on the new car in the effort to save money. And then Ted has a list of things here we'd like to get permission to. First of all, I guess I look for permission from you folks to sell the SRO car because we may have a buyer in an, out of, where's it at? Out of Colorado. And if we give them the okay, they want to come within the next two weeks and pick it up. So that'd be the first thing I guess to ask.
And this is the car that is now out of warranty?
Correct. Six years old, got over 80,000 miles on it.
And we had planned to replace this vehicle anyway.
Correct.
Okay. And I think the question came up at the last meeting whether we were trading in or selling and that we are selling it. Now, apparently we have a, a buyer.
Correct.
Do we have an amount?
Not yet. We're gonna, we're kind of looking for some guidance there. I think we've got 7,000. What we're doing, we've been doing pretty good. They haven't made an offer yet. They're waiting for us to get permission to get rid of it at this point in time.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Sounds like a good way to get rid of it to me. If he's got a buyer, you know, don't want him sitting around. So whatever, I don't, I think that would be handled the same way we do with the fire trucks or the town's equipment. Find somebody that wants it and send it down the road.
So is, did I hear a motion in there that it's authorizing the police department to sell our cruiser, our SRO's cruiser?
So, that's I did. If you wanted to know what I thought so. But yes, I'd make a motion. We authorize them to sell it.
Okay. The second, JP, any discussion?
How long would it take to get the new one in once that one's gone?
Wow.
Good evening, everybody. It's Ted. So I've placed the order through Ford for our new one. They told me 90 days. I placed the order, I think roughly a week and a half ago and they're going to keep me in the loop as far as when it's going to be coming in. That's about the best answer I can get you on when the new car is going to be here.
But we're not going to be short a car in the meantime, correct?
No, we're not.
Okay.
Okay, so the next thing is our former major Sly had outfitted a
Wait, wait, is, I think we need a vote on the motion to sell the cruiser?
Yes, we do.
Okay, any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Erin, did you vote?
I did. I said aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Okay, Chief, next.
The next item is approximately a month ago, our former major Sly called me up. He had outfitted a car for himself with brand-new equipment and whatnot. And then he was ill and never used it. He did outfit his car, but he called me and said he's interested in getting rid of it all. And he's got an $8,400 radio that we, that he sells at half cost. And also, what else he had for us? No. Oh, the head, the control head for the siren system. And that still has a two-and-a-half year warranty on it. And again, that would be half price. So we'd be getting about $12,000 worth of equipment for half that price. So we'd like to get permission by the radio and the control head. That's it, just those two things. For the lights and sirens, or excuse me, the radio and the control head for the lights and sirens.
Okay, do we have money in the budget?
We do.
Okay, would this come out of the Equipment Appreciation Fund?
No, I'd just take it out of the budget if I could, Mary.
All right. Any motion or discussion by the Select Board?
I'd move that we allow the police department to purchase that equipment from former Town Police Officer, yeah, Mr. Sly.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, so Erin beat you to it, JP. Erin seconded. Discussion. JP, any thoughts?
The cruiser that's being sold, is that being sold equipped?
No, we're stripping it out. We're going to use the lights out of that. The radio in that is how old? Eight years old? Nine years old. It's out of warranty. I don't know if we can get parts for it. So it's better to get this radio than to keep that one at this point in time. But we are going to use the lights off it. On the new
And what line, what line item in your budget would this come from?
Equipment.
How much is on that? How much is left in that?
So we've overspent in equipment this year. However, because we're not paying the salary for former Officer Gamble, because we haven't touched a dime out of the part-time officer position that we're also getting rid of for next year, and because Chief Dumas's car has been paid off and we have around 3,500 left in that line, we don't risk going over budget.
Well, you, you risk deficit spending that line item, which is where it needs to be reflected.
It, it will be reflected there, but
All right.
At this point, as we go into the, into the Appreciation Fund, we purchased that speed car there. So it's really not as high as we would, as it would have been. So we'd rather have that come out of our budget currently than to go into that.
Okay, you don't have it in your budget to be able to take it out. You'll be deficit spending that line item. That's my only point.
On that one line item, yes, we will be deficit spending on it.
Okay, that's all. I just want that to be reflected in the budget. That's all.
Okay. Any other questions of the Chief? Pending motion is whether to purchase the two pieces of equipment from former Officer John Sly. Joe, anything further?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, Erin, any questions?
No.
Okay, if not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, anything else, Chief?
Yes, I don't want Ted to take over now. Some, a bunch of equipment in the Go ahead, Ted. So we'd like to get permission to buy the remaining equipment for the new car. It's not, it is no K-9 equipment. I want to make that very clear. This is the equipment just to finalize it so that when it comes in, we have everything ready for install to get it on the road. So I worked with Bill. We reached out to a couple of companies to get different prices on equipment. One company got back to us with a final price of $2,096. The other company got back to us with a price of $2,157. The first quote that I gave you, that company does not supply the center consoles for cruisers. That is just the lights from that company. The second quote I gave you for $2,100 has the center console and the remaining equipment we need.
Okay, questions, comments, motions from the Select Board members? Joe?
Well, I'm just thinking, Mary, that normally when we replace a vehicle, and I'm thinking like a fire truck or a highway truck, all of the new equipment that goes with that vehicle comes out of depreciation. So I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, we've go to buy some stuff from John Sly and put on there and they're going to take that out of the budget. But I would have think that the price of the new vehicle plus all that equipment should come out should come out of the depreciation fund. Normally, that's the way new stuff is sold or bought and sold and how we do things. So I, I, I don't know how, we're, we're kind of piecemealing some of this together and it may get a little confusing to track and do that. I know the, the police are doing the best. You know, they're, they're trying to make the best possible arrangements to get this car up and running. But I'm just wondering if we just, just take this additional equipment, should be part of the depreciation and, and let them just do what they need to do. That's, I mean, normally that's the way you would buy a vehicle, fully equipped with whatever it needs. You have an equipment amount that goes with that new vehicle. You know, I'm, I'm looking at the meeting minutes from the police committee meeting where they talked about the car and the price of the car. So, um, you know, maybe that should, I know that's just the vehicle. And then the additional stuff would be um, the stuff to outfit it to make sure it's ready for the road. So, you know, my thoughts are maybe some of this other new stuff just needs to come out of depreciation as part of the purchase price of the vehicle.
Joe, I'm good with that.
What I don't understand is the, 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 I guess the hurry to buy this vehicle. What is the rush?
We ordered, we ordered it. Got permission with the last town meeting, JP. And then now we're just trying to get the equipment already to go. So when it comes in, we can put together as fast as we can.
JP?
I'm all set.
Okay.
Okay, there's no mode?
If you'd like me to take that out of the, we're good with taking that out of the appreciation fund.
So, so um, one of the things, Mary, that will happen is if we sell the other car in whatever monies get for that car. Normally, that money from the sale goes back into the depreciation fund. So the sale of the car we're getting rid of will offset most of or all of this new equipment.
Right. Still don't have a motion.
I moved that, we'll, look, go ahead.
I was gonna say a motion to purchase all of the equipment that the police uh, have discussed with funding from the depreciation fund.
Second.
Alright, may I assume that's the twenty one fifty-seven bid, which includes the center console?
Yes.
Okay, and JP seconded?
I did.
Alright. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion. And again, this is coming out of the depreciation account um, to spend twenty one hundred fifty-seven dollars for equipping the cruiser, please say aye.
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 Okay, anyone opposed? Alright, so the motion carries.
Mary?
Yes.
I hate, I hate to drag this on any longer, but um, should we rethink the purchase of the equipment from John Sly as to also, rather than deficit spend that item, that line in their current budget, maybe we should just do it all. And like I said, whatever we get for that new, the old car will pretty much offset that equipment. And it, it would be much cleaner if we did it that way. Which would mean that we'd have to rescind that previous vote to, to pay for the money for um, that other equipment from John Sly out of the current budget and just do away with it and then do it all this way. I think that's, but I didn't think of that when we were talking, but that's a much better way to do it.
So are you moving? Are you moving to, to rescind the previous vote on the uh?
The vote on, yes, I would, I would move that we rescind the vote to pay for the uh, equipment from John Sly. The, it, it's the new equipment that hasn't been used. And uh, instead of using monies from the current budget equipment line item, we purchase that equipment from the depreciation fund.
Do we have enough money there, Joe?
Well, if there, I believe there will be because that car um, I, I think that that'll bring us five or six thousand, which should cover it. Because we just said we're gonna take twenty one hundred out of there and whatever they get for that car. And I think Ed's thought maybe around seven for it. So that should cover the six thousand dollars worth of equipment from John.
So it looks like a net we'd be taking maybe um, eleven or twelve hundred out of the um, that wasn't covered by the sale of the cruiser.
Yeah, that's, that was my quick math in my head, Mary. Same thing.
Okay. So motion's been made to rescind that portion of the purchase from John Sly to have the money come out of the depreciation fund rather than uh, the equipment line which is already expended. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, uh, two seconds. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, motion carries there. Okay, Ed, anything else?
That is all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, John Paul, Town Health Officer.
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you.
Mary?
Yes?
Did, did you miss Byron?
I did. Yeah, sorry Byron. I had you checked off and completely missed you. Byron Hathaway, Town Road Commissioner. What have you got?
Thank you, Mary. Um, one item in particular, um, I've had a call not once but twice. And I think Bill Sweet has had a call from a particular citizen from the town of Clarendon. And she would like us to, she would ultimately like us to reclassify the remaining section of Quarterline Road to Class Three status with the hope that we would increase the level of service there um, during the winter. She apparently uh, is a operating room nurse uh, at the hospital. Gets called at various different times. And uh, prefers to travel from Clarendon to the hospital via uh, Quarterline Road as it takes less, much less time for her than it does for her to go out to Walker Mountain Road and down to the, to the middle road. Uh, so anyways, uh, I'm not inclined to, to think that we need to change the classification of that road. Uh, there are no houses or citizens uh, of the town of Rutland that live on that road. We have a Class Four maintenance policy. I've explained that to her. Um, the road does get plowed. It does get sanded. Uh, but it's not a priority road because it is Class Four. Um, so I'm just bringing it to you. Um, I wasn't sure if she was gonna be uh, attending the meeting tonight or not. She mentioned that she might. But I don't recognize anyone here um, that's a, that's on the meeting. So I just wanted to throw that out there at you, put it in your back of your mind. Like I say, I don't think we need to change anything. But uh, if, if you think about it and want to, well then let me know. I'll work on it for another winter. Um, the other thing I have is the uh, Sugarwood Hills uh, signage change um, and renaming that short section um, with the little cul-de-sac, uh, Sugarwood Hill uh, extension. Uh, that sign came in and the guys found that there wasn't any frost in the ground underneath the snow. So they were able to put the sign up today.
Good.
So that's up. And then uh, the last thing was the item in your packet. You wanted to know about reclassifying the road. And that page is from the Orange Book. And I would encourage any of you who, if you have questions about highways or anything to uh, Google V-Trans Orange Book. And all that information is in there. But anyways, it's a simple process. Um, and we don't need to, you've got plenty of time between now and fall to initiate that process. And certainly I would recommend that you wait till a little better, warmer weather uh, to initiate that process because it uh, does require a site visit.
Okay. This is a different section of Quarterline Road?
This is the section from Boardman Hill
Yeah.
to Peak Billings driveway.
Yeah.
Um, that should have been classified Class Three uh, back in the early nineties or even before. Uh, when it, when the road was upgraded to that status. But apparently it never has been. Um, I guess it's something that's escaped to me for quite a number of years. The nine one one people brought it to our attention. And uh, I, we just need to go through the, the acceptance or the reclassification process. And then V-Trans will change that. And that will upgrade a lot of money that we collect for uh, state aid.
Okay. Um, Bill, would you add that to the old business section of our agenda so we don't lose it? We're probably not gonna take it up for, well, a couple of months until we can get out there. But we don't want to lose sight of that. Thank you. Bless you, whoever.
Okay, Mary, that's uh, that's all I had unless there's any questions from any other board members.
Right. Any questions of our Road Commissioner? Okay, thank you Byron.
Yeah, just would like to wish uh, all the pending candidates a good luck tomorrow and uh, bundle up if you plan on standing outside of the polls.
Yeah, nasty day. Okay, um, so there was a police committee meeting. And um, I, I think if folks have had a chance to review that, you've seen that we were, uh, we met on February sixteenth. We were talking about some of the, the school resource officer legislation, which I think is um, hasn't moved lately, I don't believe. We also discussed the application process for a new police officer. You heard earlier that we've had one person apply so far. We discussed the purchase of the new cruiser and we've discussed some of that tonight, the equipment side of it. And um, then some longer term planning. And I think the, there's one, a section five, a proposal to purchase mobile printers. Did we approve that at our last meeting?
I thought we did, Mary. We didn't? I don't think we have. Now I guess, I guess we're maybe we're waiting the prices.
Yeah. Ted was gonna look into the prices, so let's get-
Turned anything back yet from that?
Okay, okay. I don't want to overlook it. So um, that's the, and, and I think any action items were already taken care of on the police committee meeting. Any other meetings that have occurred? Alright. If none, um, update on project list. Well, I think we're gonna be doing a new project list when our new select board is constituted after town meeting. So I think we can skip over that for the time being. Um, new business, we have already done A, which is the board to discuss the sale of the police cruiser. Is there any other new business to come before us tonight?
So I, I had an item. I've had, I've had several residents call me about moving the library out of the city. Um, and I, I frankly didn't realize that a lot of folks will use uh, the availability of the library in the city to do other chores in and around the city. And are concerned with moving it out of the city that that certainly would interfere. And I was wondering, has anybody on the board been contacted by anybody on the library? Because the town is a, just to see what we thought of the move. Because the town's a pretty big contributor to the library.
Um, JP, I did hear from um, yeah, the, the head of the library. And it, with an invitation to attend this meeting that I think was in December, early December. I wasn't able to make the Zoom meeting, but I did speak um, quite, quite at length with him. And um, you know, it was informational more than anything. He wasn't asking really for the town's input. Um, in that sense, he was explaining what was going to happen. And I have looked at the presentation on the town's, uh, on the library website. And um, and I think I've been contacted by one town resident and then a resident from outside of town who is, I think, in the, the area. So the town was not asked, as far as I know, to take a position on the moving of the building. Um, we, we obviously are asked to um, support the budget, which is the operating budget, which is different than, of course, the, the capital budget. Which would uh, you know, deal with the moving of the building. Joe, did you want to say something?
Uh, only that uh, Rose, my wife Rose uses the hospital, or the library and she is upset that they're moving. And a number of people uh, that she associates with in the uh, um, the council on independent living are concerned about its move because access to it is now gonna be way more difficult. Um, you can't just get in a, you know, folks that are confined to wheelchairs or whatever can't just go from an apartment in downtown to the library. To get to the new site would be um, whatever. So there's not a, I haven't heard anything really good about the move.
Well, I, I disagree, Mary. That uh, I don't think the operational budget is different from the capital budget. As a matter of fact, I think the operational budget probably supports the capital budget. But, but the point is, is that town people are being impacted by this move. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't look at this so that we can uh, maybe take a position on it. Maybe we should be taking a position. It doesn't seem to be benefiting any town residents.
It's a little closer to Flori Heights. I mean, I will say that. It's, it's out of the center of the city and over toward one of our neighborhoods. So there's a, a small advantage in, in that direction. That's fine. What's the, what's the feeling of other board members?
Well, you know, I don't think it would hurt that if we feel that this is not in the best interest of town residents using it, then we can express our concerns. I mean, we, we contribute approximately ninety six thousand dollars to the operation of the library. Um, it should give us at least a little say. And, and you might play frankly find out that if people in Rutland Town are unhappy with that move, they may not vote for it.
Madam Chair, may a non-board member make a comment?
Um, is that Marty?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay.
I just want to say that um, this Wednesday, uh, there are tours of the potential new library at three, four, five and six o'clock. And on Tuesday, March ninth, hourly from eight to two. And on March eleventh, four, five and six. And on Saturday, March thirteenth at noon time. So anyone wants to go and look over the facility, um, it's gonna be available for us to look at. Thank you for letting me speak.
Good. Thanks for that information, Marty. Um, a, a number of years ago, I was on the library board when a different move was proposed. And, and that was at the time, there was a proposal to build in the pit downtown, a oh, three or four story building. And the library was gonna be the anchor on the first floor. We went through quite a process then. And we were told initially that the cost would be, to the library would be free, that uh, monthly rental, there would be no monthly rental. It turned out that the numbers didn't work for free. So the library board abandoned the idea of moving at that time. We also brought in uh, Paul Bruin, who was at the time the person heading Vermont Historic Preservation. And he walked a number of us through the library and saw some of the real um, classic features and, and the incredible architecture in there. So this idea of moving is not a new one. It does come up periodically. And, you know, it's, that move back then, probably twelve years ago, was not um, what the library board agreed to do. But this new one is, um, yes, is before us and is being looked at.
Well, I, I would make a motion, I would make a motion that we form an ad hoc committee to see what, to just to look into the move and see what the sentiments of the town voters are in terms of you know, whether or not they support it and whether or not they want to be heard on the issue.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that, Mary.
Thank you, Joe. Motion's made and seconded by Joe to set up an ad hoc committee to look into the move and- and find out what the feeling of Rutland Town's residents are toward the move. Any further discussion?
What ultimately would be the result of collecting that knowledge, I guess? Would it be just to let them know whether we are satisfied with the move? Would it be to reduce funding? What would the end goal be on both ends, I guess?
My thought in forming the committee was simply to take a look at the information and report back to the full board. And then if the full board decides it wants to receive the information or act on, that would be up to the full board.
Okay.
Okay. All right. You ready for the motion? If so, all of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. So, we have a little time, we will invite folks who might be interested in serving on that committee to be in touch with any one of the select board members or with, with Bill in the, in his office, so.
And I would volunteer Joe to serve on that.
You would, would you? Second.
Well, well, wait, wait, wait. Why don't we, why don't we wait and see who's interested in serving on it and not try and put the committee together tonight? Okay? Don, did you have something?
Yes, well, I, thank you, Mary, for inviting me to speak here for just a second. Yes, I would be, I would certainly be interested in serving on that committee. But as you know, I mean, when we have members that are, that serve on these boards, as a, as your representative on the Rutland, not the Rutland, but the Regional Ambulance Service for the last eight years, I could not possibly contemplate that if the Regional Ambulance Service wanted to move their headquarters from there to some other location, that as your representative, the town's representative on this board, that I wouldn't be contacting you as a board of selectmen, as select people, and/or the town to get the town's input before I would participate as a, as a board member on the, on the Regional Ambulance Board. So, I would think that one of the things that, that you should do is invite our board members that serve on the library board, as you did, in to explain your position to them and maybe have them, have them deal with the administration of the library to see vis a vis our, our participation in this thing and how they would value our input. But that's their job as representatives. They're, they're not representing the library, they're representing the town of Rutland. I want to know what they think about this thing. I mean, they haven't, I don't know, as they've talked to anybody in the town to find out what the town thinks. And I don't really believe it, quite frankly, I don't think it's fair to the two board members that we go around their back. I think we should, we should let them be board members and present our views to the, to the, to the library. But I think there are some serious concerns. I think there's some serious financial concerns as well, Mary.
We've, we've heard enough outside the rail.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Don.
We shouldn't be here from outside the rail.
Well, she invited me.
Well, I also invited Marty, so.
That's correct. And that's all I want to say, and.
Thank you, Don.
Well, then you're still talking, Don.
Thank you, John.
All right, moving along. Any other new business to come before the board?
We didn't vote on the, on the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Bill. This is the motion to establish the ad hoc committee. Any further discussion from among the select board? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, just again, a, anyone interested in serving should make their offer to serve known and to any select board member or to Bill Sweet. Thank you. Down under old business, we have tabled the motion about the guardrail at the intersection of Post Road, and I think we're waiting for some results from the signs that we've posted there. We have the policy for signs on town-owned property during elections, and we're going to wait for a bit on that. Appointing representatives to the solid waste, the alliance communities, and to the Regional Ambulance Service, we're waiting for after-town meeting results on that. And is there any other old business that we need to consider at this time? All right, do any select board members have anything that they wish to bring up? John Paul?
All set.
Thank you. Joe?
All good, thank you, Mary.
Okay, thanks. Aaron?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder that, of course, at 7:00 o'clock, we will be on our informational part of our annual town meeting. And you saw, and I expect, since I didn't hear from any of you, that you are all okay with who's reporting what on our town budget? Okay.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Are we going first, are we going first on this session?
No, I think, you know, for the full year, the school goes first this year. Next year, we go first, both for the pre-town meeting and for the informational meeting. I think that's how it works.
Thank you.
Yep. We will have a presentation, I think, at the very beginning, so you may want to be present for that.
And that kicks off at 12:00, right, Mary?
Correct. Yeah. Same Zoom information, Bill?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, if there's nothing further to be discussed, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, Joe moves, Aaron seconds to adjourn the select board meeting. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.